All right, let's show the, uh... Let's show our meeting starting promptly. Ms. Voss, it's not as promptly as normal, but it is 3:04 and we'll start today's meeting. I believe at this time I'm going to recognize Commissioner Proctor for our pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Eternal God, we thank you for a day we've never seen. We thank you for being you. We thank you for allowing us to be who we are individually and as a community. We thank you, Lord, for a teachment at Acts 10 where your servant Paul saw some instrument fall from heaven. Recognizing different animals, God, you taught Paul that all things were clean. And those things which he deemed as not being common, you fortified and gave new awareness that they indeed are common. We think that creatures share a horizontal grid, one with the other, and there are no tall, vertical pecking orders. And that eventually in that same chapter, you allow Paul to declare that I perceive God is no respecter of persons, but to those who honor and are afraid of him, he responds and yields to one and all. Help us tonight. Help us always not to be respecters of persons and to see ourselves in a human circle and, at worst, merely on a horizontal grid. May we cast judgments reflective of our thoughts of being in a circle, a family. Thank you for our employees. We thank you for our citizens. We thank you for the boys and girls who count on us to do the right thing. Now, please give us the unction to function with that level of spirit to do that what is right for the citizens of our community tonight. This is our prayer from a courthouse, Tallahassee, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have some special proclamations for some special people, folks, and groups to start off our meeting today. Commissioner Maddox.
Um, I'm looking.
I saw them here.
Oh, they are here. Where? All right. Uh, Mary Claire Lehman? Oh.
I'm sorry, other shoulder. Other shoulder.
Listen, I was looking for Dr. Gill because she said she was coming.
Yeah, come on up. Come on up. Kelly, come on up.
My dear colleague from Hartsfield Elementary, Dr. Flanagan, good to see you here.
All right. This proclamation reads, "Thank you, Mr. Chair, for helping me out there. Mary Claire Lehman has been the epitome of an outstanding school volunteer for over ten years. And whereas despite having three school-aged children of her own, Mary Claire has found time to be a member of the parent-teacher organization and school advisory council, a mentor to five students, a district representative on two advisory councils, a public school advocate, a playground monitor, and a classroom volunteer. And whereas Mary Claire helped to establish the Title I Advisory Council, which she chaired for two years and now continues to help facilitate the monthly meetings and keep the Leon County School Board informed of the council's work. And whereas during the past few Florida legislative sessions, Mary Claire has defended public education by addressing legislature's Education Committee regarding the impact of their policies on Title I schools and pushes back the narrative of failing schools and the defunding of public education. And whereas Mary Claire Lehman was recognized as a 2017-2018 Leon County Outstanding School Volunteer in the Adult category. And whereas Mary Claire Lehman was recognized by the Florida Department of Education as the Outstanding School Volunteer Regional Award winner in the Adult category. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County, Florida, that Mary Claire Lehman be recognized for her outstanding contribution to the public school system in Leon County and her unrelenting commitment to ensuring a quality education for all students. This is signed by the Chair as well as the rest of the Commission and attested by the County Administrator."
Mary Claire, congratulations.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Jackson and County Commissioners. I'm Kelly Walker, and I have the honor and the privilege of serving as the District Volunteer Coordinator for Leon County Schools. We are so fortunate to have such an exceptional volunteer as Marie Claire Lehman. Not only does she, as Commissioner Maddox said, not only does she serve as a stellar volunteer at Hartsfield Elementary School, she has spearheaded so many initiatives at the district level also. And kind of to put things into perspective, to kind of tell you the magnitude of this award that was bestowed upon her by the Florida Department of Education, there are over a half a million school volunteers in the state of Florida. Each year, annually, the Florida Department of Education recognizes five adult winners, and Marie Claire Lehman was one of those winners. So we are very fortunate to have her in our district. She's an amazing volunteer, and she always puts the needs of all of our students first. So congratulations, Marie Claire.
Thank you. This is such an honor to be here with you, although I'm often very uncomfortable in situations like this, especially because all the work I do is always in the context of teams, different teams, lots of teams. Many of you in the room today are on some of those teams. And so whether it be School Board Member Jones or Principal Flanagan, there are so many here. Even one of your teachers, Commissioner Jackson, was on one of our teams. And so it's a little bit... And Commissioner Maddox and I are on a team right now. And so it's very awkward for me to receive an award which really goes to the teams that do the work with me. But you're actually the first ones to allow me to speak, so I'm sorry, I'm really eager to, because one of the teams I have not thanked in all this process is my family, and four or three of them, I guess, are here today. Will, Emma, and Sabri are here today. And without that team, I wouldn't have any time to do all of the work that I can do for Leon County Schools, because it's really the way that they pitch in each of them, my three kids and my husband, at home that really allows me, and even on some of these other teams, that allows me to be so active for our schools. And as Commissioner Maddox said, my... Really, my main concern is Title I schools and making sure that our schools in Leon County are equitable and that every single public school student has the same opportunities regardless of the schools that they're attending. And even though I'm not going to be Chair of the Title I Advisory Council, I'm still going to be a member, and I'm probably still going to be a squeaky wheel on that issue with any of you and our school board and our district and our city and everywhere where those kids need to be well-served. Thank you so much for recognizing me today. I really appreciate your time and your dedication to the issues that surround the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you'll allow it, Dr. Flanagan will say a few words as well.
Dr. Flanagan, good to see you.
Good to see you. It's great to be here. I'm the proud principal of Hartsfield Elementary School. And just want to underscore what... Everything that has been said, Ms. Lehman is the epitome, the epitome, and I don't use that word lightly, of parental engagement, parental support. And it means so much to our school. We're great because of parents like Ms. Lehman and a community that supports our public schools, because we do great things from the inside out. And so I'm so happy for the Commission to deem this as important and to bring this honor on Ms. Lehman as well as Hartsfield School and Community. And again, we'd like to say thank you.
Commissioner Dozier, a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention, I am an alumni and a proud Hartsfield Hawk, so I am excited that you are here. Thank you, Principal Flanagan, for being here. And Marie Claire, when you started to speak, I recognize your voice from WFSU, Voices That Inspire. You were on there recently, and the message of committing yourself to a school, particularly one where other parents may be making a different choice from their family, it was really powerful. And thank you, it sparked a lot of conversations. So you're doing it not just at Hartsfield for all those kids, but throughout the community. So thank you for doing that.
I'm sure we would love to clone you and place one of you in every school across Leon County, but we appreciate your work. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you have an additional proclamation?
Tell you what, her family's a lot more shy than she is. I tried to get them to come up and take a picture, and all of them were like, no picture for me. So they should be very proud. Your mom does a lot for the district. I remember taking over as Executive Director of the Foundation. And she was one of the people, one of the first people that I met, and the first thing she asked was how much money are Title I schools getting from the Foundation? It made me go research and give her answer immediately. So she is the real deal. Now, I would like to present a proclamation to the Florida State University for their Civil Rights Institute. Mr. Chair, I don't think anybody's here yet, but if you want to, I could postpone. I could go ahead and read.
We'll postpone.
Okay.
And we were actually asked to add that, so I'm surprised they're not here.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll postpone, and we'll move on to... Although I'm slated for Ms. Rebecca Voss, I'm going to ask my dear, esteemed, and long-serving veteran colleague, Commissioner Proctor, to come to the dais for a proclamation. I think I'd like him to be joined by our Clerk of Court if she is available.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, one and all, I have the esteemed honor of representing the Chairman by virtue merely of years served to present to Ms. Voss a proclamation recognizing her retirement from her duties. Let me say that Commissioner Yorden and Commissioner Akinemi, you all can appreciate as Commissioners that sometimes in this room that there are media cameras that are there, and those cameras and the media persons like Mr. Edders from the Democrat and other sources. And there are things that School Board Member Jones, that you say to make sure that they hear you. But most of the times when Commissioners are talking, the person that we want most to be heard by very clearly is the person who's the stenographer and taking the minutes, and that's Ms. Voss. And on occasion, this Commission has heard me say, "Ms. Voss, you got that, Ms. Voss? You heard me, Ms. Voss." And we want Mr. Edders to hear us, we want WC TV and all of them. But most of all, I always want you to hear me, and we thank you for your years of service, Ms. Voss. On behalf of the Leon County Board of Commissioners, it is indeed my honor to say to you in this proclamation that whereas Rebecca Voss began her employment with Leon County Clerk of Court and Comptroller on January 14, 2008, as the Board's Secretary, and whereas Mrs. Voss is well-regarded by her peers and supervisors for her hard work, professionalism, and poise, and whereas Mrs. Voss has been a dedicated employee serving the citizens of Leon County and willing to do whatever it takes to complete the mission at hand, and whereas Mrs. Voss's dedication to her job was exemplified in her willingness to work long hours to ensure the Leon County Board of County Commissioners had accurate minutes for each board meeting, missing only two. In the years of serving the Board, she has also supported the Charter Review Committee, the Sales Tax Extension, and Innovation Park. Clerk, she should have got a raise right there on all of that right there. And whereas Mrs. Voss has throughout her career provided guidance and leadership to her fellow coworkers and will certainly be missed by all Citizen Staff, Commissioners and Commission aides, and whereas Rebecca Voss will enter the life of leisure on July 26, 2019, with 11.5 years of committed service to reflect upon, she plans to continue her gardening, travel with her husband, spend time with her children, four grandchildren, and welcoming her fifth grandchild. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County that Rebecca Voss be recognized and commended for her years of service and dedication to Leon County, dated this ninth day of July 2019. It is indeed signed by the County Commissioners and attested by our County Administrator, and we say to you, Ms. Voss, heartfelt thanks and gratefulness for your commendable service. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Gwen Marshall, the Clerk of Court here in Leon County, and on behalf of the Clerk's Office, I would like to present to you today this Voss.
It sounds like a boss for Voss.
A boss for Voss.
I caught that. I heard you.
But we would like to thank you for all that you've done for all of us, your dedicated service to the citizens of Leon County. It saddens us that you're leaving, but we would like to wish you all the best and come back and visit us soon. But let me read.
Don't pretend. Go ahead and put them on.
I would like to present this on behalf of the Leon County Clerk's Office to Rebecca Voss in appreciation of 11 years of dedicated services to the citizens of Leon County this July 9, 2019.
Now, Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Voss says anything, please note to my recollection, this will be the first time I have ever heard her speak in this room. She hears all of us.
She's normally pretty busy listening to us. Ms. Voss, congratulations, and we all look forward to hearing from you, obviously.
I feel like I should have something prepared.
Fill out a speaker's card.
Am I going to be timed?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to have been your Board's Secretary for almost 12 years. It has really been an honor to sit in that chair. And keep your record, and I'm going to miss you and the Tuesdays that we've spent together for a really long time, and I'm just going to miss everyone. I love my finance family, but I also appreciate and love my county family, of which everyone has made me feel a part. Mary, Heather, James, the Commission aides, I can't even begin to name all the people that I've considered really good friends of mine. Again, just thank you for the opportunity, and I'm going to really miss everyone. Thank you.
Before I turn it over to a Commissioner comment, I do want to recognize that not only do we have our Clerk of Court here, but our Leon County Sheriff Walt McNeil, Sheriff McNeil, and our Leon County Property Appraiser, Akeem Akinemi. Good to see both of you. Did I miss anyone? Okay. Mr. Commissioner Lindley.
Just wanted to make a comment. I actually have watched your face for the last seven years, and I think you can now have a poker face again if you want to. But it's... Every now and then I'll see those eyebrows go up, but you just tend to business. But I want to thank you for a great service. And I think one of the Chairman Jackson, the first time I was chairing, someone said, "Whatever you do, don't ask Rebecca if she got that, because she has always got it." So I think we can trust that. It's always been a wonderful, professional performance. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Deloge and Commissioner Maddox have a few words.
Rebecca, we wish you the best in your retirement. Rebecca and I have kind of a close bond, and probably in the entire room, I would argue that outside of her parents, we knew each other before anybody else did. We were born the same day, the same hospital, the same year, a few years ago. I'd just like to wonder, why is she retiring and I'm still working? But you had... Because I came in pretty close the same time you started, and it has been great. And as Commissioner Lindley said, I watched over the years when things got a little theatrical, and you sometimes gave away, you know, where you were at with some of this, so thank you.
It was hard sometimes.
It was. You've done a great job, and you deserve all the retirement, and enjoy. You'll be missed. Thanks.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Special relationship, we actually, me and Ms. Voss go to a few times in Savannah. She has some family members that went there, so I enjoyed spending the time that we got to spend with you. My time as Chair was made special because I got to look over you and ask you, "Did you have that?" Off the times, you nodded your head, "Yes," but I also wanted to take the opportunity to recognize her husband and thank her for the years. I thank him for the years that he shared her with us. I asked him, actually on my way in, I said, "Could we have her another four or five years?" He gave me an abrupt "No." There was a couple... There was a word before that, but I can't say it on TV. But he was very clear in that he was ready for her to come home, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. You've done a great job here at Leon County for us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going to miss you, Rebecca, for sure. Not just seeing you sitting here, but passing the hall and chatting every now and then. But I also want to take this time and say ditto to everything else that has been said. But so many meetings recently, we're talking for years about increased public engagement and how do we reach out more and make sure that we have transparency in what we're doing. The role of the person who is documenting what happens in public meetings may be one of the most overlooked roles at times, but it's one of the most critically important roles to maintain our transparent process in the sunshine. You have fulfilled that and with dedication and incredible service, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't get to say nothing.
Well, you've said your piece, but go ahead, Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that Ms. Voss is always the same, and that's nice all the time, nice. And of the jobs that people have in the county, hers is the one job among all the jobs that I just... It would be most difficult for me to execute, and that's because her job is required to always remain quiet and be silent. I couldn't do that. Congratulations, Ms. Voss. It's a challenge.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rebecca, I haven't been here for very long, but just wanted to thank you for everything that you have done since I've been here and for the seven years of incredible work that you've been here before I got here. So thank you very much and wish you the best.
Thank you. Although I'm on the schedule, I'm going to ask Commissioner Deloge to step forward. He has a unique and special proclamation to...
What's in his hand? Oh!
So I've been doing this for 13 years, and I've done more proclamations than I'd like to remember, and this is going to have to be one of the harder ones. I'll say... And I rarely bring props down here, but... And our Chairman pointed out, he said, "I have bad memories of Senator Monford when he was my school principal back in the day." So I just wanted to say, today we're going to recognize my aide Brenda Tanner for 13 years here, putting up with me and all the rest of us. Thirty years at the city before this, but I thought it was worth noting that she left the city 13 years ago, and with all due respect to the mayor and the rest of the city over there, they've kind of gone downhill pretty fast. And so I walked in my office every day for 13 years, and it's been fine. The day she leaves, I'm ankle-deep in water. I had to use an oar to get to the office today, so you will be missed terribly. Come on up. And I'd like to ask, you had her family come in, Tyshaun, you guys, come on, Haven, Michael. Brenda has been part of the family. It was the first person I hired, first person, only aide I've had the whole time. As of today going forward, I'm going to be late for every meeting, I'm going to miss every email, I'm not going to respond to any calls. She has done behind-the-scenes more work than anybody will ever know goes on. It's been a real honor, and she's been a rock for me. So I've got a resolution I'd also like to point out. We're going to do a little reception for both the retirees, Rebecca and Brenda, at 5 at dinner break. So for people who are here, we'd love to have you come by, and thanks for the people that have come by here tonight. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Ms. Brenda Tanner has a compassion for public service unlike no other, after serving 30 years for the city of Tallahassee, she began her employment in Leon County in 2006 as a Commission aide to Commissioner Brian Deloge and the citizens of District 4. And whereas Ms. Tanner has been a dedicated employee serving the citizens of Leon County and willing to do whatever it takes to complete the mission at hand and has exemplified her willingness to work long hours to ensure that myself and the citizens receive the best service. And whereas Ms. Tanner was instrumental in having the Commissioners' pictures hung in the rotunda in order to avoid them being covered during voting season and having the elevator exits." All right, so it's worth noting here, our pictures used to be in the area that they used for the voting down there, which is a side little room, and when they voted, they had to hang blankets over our pictures. So she was the one who decided and made the suggestion, "Let's put them in the rotunda down there." And so I like to say, she's been telling us where to go since she got here, and nothing has changed since then. So throughout her career, she's provided guidance and leadership to her fellow coworkers and certainly will be missed by all Citizen Staff, Commissioners, and Commission aides. And whereas Brenda will enter the next phase of her life in 2019 after 13 years committed service to Leon County, and she plans to travel and spend time with her grands, and therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County that Ms. Brenda Tanner be recognized for her 43 years of combined service and dedication to Leon County and the city of Tallahassee. And it's signed by everybody but me, because I'm disagreeing. I'm saying she should not leave, and I'm not going to be able to handle this. We love you, and we will miss you, and I'm excited for the next phase of your life, so...
You're going to make me cry.
The quiet, shy one here, would you like to say something, Ms. Tanner?
It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Leon County, specifically District 4. They need to know that they have such incredible leadership in this government with the seven Commissioners, the County Administrator, the County Attorney. Over my 43 years, I've worked with many city and county Commissioners, and this is an extraordinary bunch. I am so grateful... Okay, just a minute. I'm so grateful to Commissioner Deloge for allowing me the opportunity to serve in this capacity. There's no better service than public service. There's so much that you can see that you've accomplished when you work in public service. And when you get to know the employees, there's not a better group. They're here to serve, and they do the best they can do within their limitations. We're not a rich county, but this group of Commissioners, Administrator, Attorney, and the employees do the best they can with our limitations. the employees do the best they can with our limitations. And based upon nationwide research, we do an extraordinary job. So my compliments to all of you, and I'm going to miss you more than you know.
And we actually have a service bin to top it off, too. How's that? So we've got that here. Come on, you guys. Tysha, come on up.
So about a year ago, she became my across-the-hall neighbor when I moved across the hall, and they told me it was a great view, and it wasn't that much different. But since then, and this past week, she started removing items from her wall. So what she doesn't know is that I have a crew busy hanging all those items back up in her office now, even as we sit. But she has been a treasure for a new beginning County Commissioner, and I can't say enough about the walk that she walks, along with the words that she said. She is a great representative for other people of Leon County, and I appreciate you so much, and we'll miss you. And there are a lot of people in queue to speak. So Commissioner Lindley.
I know. We're going to miss you terribly. Brenda is just a source of amazing energy and information, the history of our county, and I have learned so much. In fact, I think right after I was elected in 2012, it was like an apprenticeship coach there to have you right across the hall. You taught me so much just about the general functioning of what a County Commissioner is all about. I think anybody who's elected to office, they probably have no idea of how complex these jobs are and how much there is to juggle. And you were merciful. You didn't actually unload all of it on me right away. But I really appreciate your teaching and your support, your encouragement all along, and your good advice over the years. And yeah, I'm right across the hall, been able to look right at you when I'm at my desk and you're at yours, and I'm going to miss you a lot. We all are. We all are. Come visit.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 43 years of service, that is quite a resume to have, and we are nowhere near having you leave Leon County yet, or ready for you to leave Leon County yet, so wish we could have you much longer. But it's been a pleasure to walk down the hall and see you in your office every single day, and literally every time I would walk by her office, she was there doing work. Brian has been very lucky to have you. There is no replacing a Brenda Tanner. There's no way he's going to find someone to do as much or the depth of work that you did for him. And District 4 will miss you, miss you as well as the county will miss you greatly for what you've done for us and what you've done for this county and this city. So we appreciate the service. And again, 43 years is something that you should be very proud of and should be ready to walk away, knowing that you've done everything that you could do to make this county and this city better. Thank you. Congratulations.
Before I move to Commissioner Dozier, Gary, Commissioner Jordan, thank you for joining us. I recognized folks a while ago and wanted to make sure. Thank you. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have had the pleasure of working right across the hall from you, Brenda, for almost nine years now, and it is a joy to see you every day. You have been, as Commissioner Lindley said, a constant support. I'm not sure there's any other more fierce advocate, from pictures downstairs to anything we need for the Commission and taking care of this Commission, and we could not do it without advocates like you, and thank you for that. You are a very special friend, and so I actually want to say right now, quit feeling sad about retiring. We're going to be fine. You have done a phenomenal job for 43 years, and celebrate your retirement. You deserve this. The wonderful man standing next to you, you can push him out of the nest, he's ready.
No, he ain't.
He can do this. And your wonderful family standing next to you, who we've heard a lot about over the years. It's good to see you all. I know you want to spend more time with them, and I'm going to single out Michael, although we've not met. Your grandmother said the other day that walking down the hall one morning not feeling great, you stopped and said, "Can I have a hug?" And it has been on my mind for the last few weeks. You are a great support for your grandmother and your mother. So we leave you in good hands. We will see you again. Thank you, my friend. Congratulations.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brenda's professionalism is a standard and a class by itself. She's typically the first person on this side of the hall every day. She's methodical. She has a can-do mentality. Brenda's, probably outside of my mama, as a grown man, nobody has gotten in my face and told me off more than anybody than Brenda Tanner, you know? So I knew she was crazy, you know, to step to me, you know, where she does occasionally. But I will be turning my music up as loud as, you know, y'all can stand it, but Brenda wouldn't let me go up beyond. I have a good system in my office, I really do, but she wouldn't let it go over 1, you know? So I'm going to pump that thing up a little louder now, and spinners and all those good sounds will be coming out of my office now that she's gone. Let's remember that Brenda was not only the aide to the Leon County District 4 Commissioner, but she was also the aide to the President of the Florida Association of Counties. She was also the aide to the President of the National Association of Counties. So I've watched Brenda's organizational level, assisting Brian as President of the Florida Association of Counties, and his reign as President of the National Association of Counties. And for the level of travel, meetings, and this and that, that she was navigating and in the control tower, executing, it was second to none. Extraordinary. So Brenda, our aides were keeping up with us, but you kept up with our County Commissioner and our National President and our Florida President so extraordinarily well. And I just wanted to salute you. I noted it. I never told you in your ear, because I didn't want your head to get no bigger. It's definitely me all like my mom or something. So what I'm telling you today, because I won't have to see you no more. So God bless you in your retirement, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brenda, I think it was almost 20 years ago when I had my first interaction with local government, and I think it was a phone call with you. I can't remember what we talked about. It was something that I thought was very important at the time, but after I hung up, I thought to myself, "Wow, she knows what she's doing." And that was a very long time ago. But since then, I mean, you've been ever-present, ever-present. And when I think of county government, you were definitely in the mix. And with you going off to enjoy your life, I don't know how we're going to picture this, actually. It's going to be a different world. You know, we're going to refer to the pre-Brenda Tanner, the post-Brenda Tanner, and it's going to be a different experience here. But I am very grateful to know you and to work with you, and Commissioner Deloge has been very lucky to have you all these years, and we're excited about your next chapter.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. On behalf of the Leon County Administrator and your employees...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And folks in the audience at home, please bear with us. We don't do this very often, so you know this must be a very special member of the county family here. So Brenda, on behalf of all of the hundreds of county employees who can't be here tonight, just thank you, enjoy your retirement. You folks need to know that my time with Brenda goes back over a decade prior to her county work when she was at the city, and they would only break out Brenda when they really needed to, when the issues got really tough. And Commissioner Dozier used the word fierce advocate. I'll just say fierce. And so when we were in lots of different issues, sometimes on different sides of the issues, and when Commissioner Deloge told me that he was bringing Brenda on, I was frankly terrified. And so, but it's been an absolute pleasure. Again, on behalf of all the county employees, Brenda, happy retirement to you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Congratulations, Brenda.
Mr. Chairman, who are we going to...
I just have to thank, for just one minute, Sheriff Walt McNeil. When we had issues with the Sheriff's Department or that they could help us with, he was there for the citizens of this county and for the aides and the Commissioners, so I couldn't let this pass without thanking him for all the support he gave us.
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering, who's going to arrange the flowers and tell us what side to put the cassage on?
That's, we've added that to your new job title.
That would be... Okay, good, good, good. It fell on me, Brenda.
Get busy on that. Thank you again. We appreciate all of your years of service with us. At this time, I believe we are going to look at the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, before we look at consent, can I ask for an agenda modification, please?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I have items 25 and 26 moved up to the beginning of the general business agenda, which make those items number 18 and 19, and keep the rest of the agenda as it is. I'd like to make that motion if I can.
Can we get a second to that motion, 25 and 26 moving to the top of the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So we'll move item 25 and 26 to the top of the general business agenda. At this time, Mr. Administrator, are there any consent items pulled?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. There's one consent item pulled, item 13.
Item 13 for discussion, or we'll go ahead and vote on the move remaining? Okay, let's vote on the move remaining. Items minus 13, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Consent items are passed. Item number 13.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 13 is a voluntary collection agreements of tourism and development taxes. This was pulled by Commissioner Proctor. It seeks board authorization to allow us to enter into voluntary agreements with the short-term rental vendors. You may recall, we already have an executed voluntary agreement with Airbnb for this. This extends that authorization for us to be able to enter into similar agreements with HomeAway and TripAdvisor and others. And as you may know, Commissioners, this is an area that legislators and the law and technology have not all met yet, so the collection of tourism development taxes has been an issue. But in advance of a lot of that coming all together, some of these vendors have entered into voluntary agreements with jurisdictions, including us, and we're seeking your authority to enter into similar agreements, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I pulled this as a matter of form, as well as a matter of substance. As a matter of form, my recognition that this is a tax, and we're dealing with taxes, and I believe that as a Commission, our body should not have such instrument in a consent format. And I'm appreciative for the County Administrator at least affording us, the public, to know what this tax, which might be imposed in the nature of rental agreements like this. As a matter of substance, not that I have read this as thoroughly as typically I would, but is there any mechanism for disagreement? And if a tax is imposed, the party who disagrees with that, how would that disagreement be reconciled? And I think that as a matter of substance, taxpayer disagreement, we ought to have some methodology for resolution if there is questioning.
Mr. Administrator.
Sure, and Herb can feel free to jump in anywhere, but Commissioners, Commissioner Proctor, we would never put something on the consent that imposed a tax or made a recommendation to impose a tax. The tourism and development taxes are currently imposed. This is simply an item about the collection of those taxes by certain third parties that are not hoteliers, but rather, again, these short-term rental platforms, online mostly, like Airbnb, TripAdvisor, HomeAway, and others. As I mentioned, we have already entered into a voluntary agreement with Airbnb, simply to agree to collect the taxes that are imposed already by the board on, for example, hotels, and to get your authorization, again, to be able to enter into voluntary agreements with other providers in addition to Airbnb. So just thank you for the opportunity to allow us to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you, and I misunderstood the fact and nature that the tax had already been imposed, and in my reading of it, it was, my understanding, shallow, that this is what we were about to do. Okay? In terms of, if there's a dispute, if there's a dispute by the private persons who are collecting these taxes, I still think that we should make sure that there is a process for people to go through if they have disagreement with what has been levied. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move the item.
All right, items been moved and seconded. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed by the same sign. Commissioner Dozier, I want to apologize. I wanted to recognize our youth that have put in long hours today and are still here in the chambers, working hard. Would you mind doing us the honor of that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and no worries at all. This is the fifth and final week of the county's summer youth internship program, and I believe I have my numbers right, that around 700 high school and, actually, late-middle-school, high school and college students apply for about 52 spots, and they work for five weeks in various county departments and commission offices. And for the commission office interns from Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Minor's office and my office, I have had a wonderful time doing tours of various county departments. I know both of you gentlemen have done that as well. We have learned a lot this summer. And for my part, I know, Commissioner Minor, you recognized your intern earlier, and I have become a fan of Charlie for sure. I have had the pleasure of working with Sidney Forsland and Meg Norvell, who are both here, but, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take an opportunity for any summer youth intern who's in the room from any department to stand up so we can recognize their hard work and commitment to local government.
All right, guys. Stand up so we can recognize all of your hard work.
Reluctant, yes, they are. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Minor wanted to add a quick note as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dozier, thank you very much. Charlie, it's been an absolute pleasure. You know, Thursday's your last day with us, but I know you'll be here and around. We had talked before, Jody Wilkoff, my Chief of Staff, and I had talked about actually having Charlie come up here and basically do his Rubik's Cube in 12 seconds, as we boasted about and we talked about him before. What we'll do instead, though, is we'll take a video of it and put it in our newsletter so y'all can click on that YouTube link when you wish. But Charlie, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I know that it's not easy following that group of Commissioners around all day, so I know the challenge there. Mr. Administrator...
Mr. Chair, I can't let the opportunity go by without recognizing my interns as well. Skylar Rogers, Alan Williams, and Kelsey, Kate, Kelsey, sorry. I was about to call him Casey. I had three different names, but Kelsey. We have had an awesome time with them. I've actually asked each and every one of them to come back next year. They're on the fence. I don't know if the tours were too much for them, but no, they've all said they've enjoyed and learned a lot and enjoyed the tours. And Commissioner Dozier, I want to especially thank you, because Commissioner Dozier was actually their tour for Cascade Park, and that was one of their favorite tours they had thus far. They enjoy going out to see the sheriff at the jail. I might add that, the detention center, I'm sorry, I might add that Alan was terrified while he was there, but we had a good time together. We look forward to having him come back next year. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I'm glad they didn't keep you too long there, Alan, and they let you come back to us. Mr. Administrator, any items, not on the consent, or excuse me, citizens to be heard on non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have two speakers under citizens to be heard under non-agenda items. The first one is LeAnn Boone.
Ms. Boone, name and address for the record, and thank you for coming out today.
Thank you, it's LeAnn Boone, 300 South Duval. I'm here today to ask that this commission request that the county administrator put the county's component of the Boynton Still project on hold until we can get the reports back on the community input and compensation that were requested by Commissioners at the last blueprint meeting, so that we can review those reports before the next blueprint meeting, before we move forward. As you can see on the screen, this is Mr. Benton's oak. He lived on the property for over 50 years in Boynton Stills, and he watched over that oak tree before he passed away in February. It is about 77 inches in diameter at breast height, which means that it shaded the area for 400 years before he found it. Today, it is slated for removal by a rectangular, run-of-the-mill retention pond. The tree is the green spot in the middle. As you can see, the items that planners thought were worthy of altering the shape of the pond was a cell phone tower, which if I can find this, is in that little spot up there. However, how can you plan around something such as this tree if you never knew it was there? We just found out that Mr. Benton's oak, the biggest tree, has always been missing on the tree survey. It should have been notated in that red spot there. And I did confirm this with blueprint staff this morning. How could there have been adequate public input and planning if the information we all relied on was incorrect? For comparison, the Lynch Gate oak is 82 inches at diameter at breast height, that is only five inches more than Benton's oak. Oaks of similar size have been found to be 500 years old or older, older than the country itself. This is truly an exceptional specimen under the city's code and warrants special consideration as a biological and social resource to be preserved for the general public. This tree is on publicly owned land for the Linear Park, Fanu Park. To be clear, we can have parks, we can have trees, and we can have water storage. In fact, these trees are great at storing water. We could easily preserve the Benton oak by doing a little bump out like we did for the twin oaks in the former Smokey Hollow site, as you can see there. Now that we have found this ancient oak, I am asking this commission to make a motion requesting that blueprint staff redesign the retention pond to preserve Mr. Benton's 500-year oak, so that we can make it the centerpiece of this park, and rather than erasing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Other speakers?
The next speaker and the final speaker is Tom Dershipolsky.
Name and address for the record.
Tom Dershipolsky, 2115 Truscott Drive in Tallahassee. It's appropriate that I get to be here today when we're recognizing incredible employees that truly demonstrate a great deal of honesty and integrity and hard work, and I think we should celebrate, you know, the county's efforts and all the employees who are working every day at that level, which is actually why I'm here. I serve on the Red Cross Board, and, you know, I thought it was important to come down and just take a few minutes to thank the commission and the staff who've done such an incredible job over the past eight weeks at hurricane preparedness. The level of communications to our citizens and the way that it was done, happened to own a marketing firm myself, was at one of the highest levels I've ever seen. And as a member of the Red Cross Board, that's, you know, a part of our critical mission is making sure that we're always Red Cross-ready. So, that's really all I wanted to do, is just take time out of my schedule to come down and say, you guys are doing a great job, and I like knowing that the county operates in all areas with incredible level of integrity and all of its business doings. So, good job, thank you.
Well, thank you, I'm sure my colleagues agree with the gratitude. Other speakers?
Yes, one more speaker card, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, on speakers to be heard on non-agenda items, Danielle Irwin.
Good evening, Ms. Irwin, name and address for the record.
Good evening, Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive, Chair of the League of Women Voters' Local Government Committee.
And I'm Kathy Nguyen, I'm the Chair of their Healthcare Committee. And this is on your consent agenda item number seven. First, Chairman Jackson and Commissioners, we want to thank you for opening the dialogue on medical disposal of prescriptions and over-the-counter medicines. This is an important tool in the fight against opioid epidemics, drug overdose deaths, the spread of infectious diseases, as well as pollution of water resources. In fact, the take-back programs for medical disposal of these types of medicines is the best disposal option available to anyone in the public, and these medicines should never be put down any drain. Your staff has done a very good job in your staff report of summarizing the current options for disposing of medications available to Leon County residences. These efforts, however, appear limited under the DEA regulations and require partnership with the Leon County Sheriff's Office as well as the Tallahassee Police Department in order for the county to have their twice-annual collection events that occur on one day each. We would like to see medical waste disposal, excuse me, medicine disposal, over-the-counter and prescription, be offered as a collection item at the monthly county hazardous waste and electronics collection events, and we hope that future work together can help provide some funding for that same cause. Well, medical, take medication take-back events are extremely important, having a permanent collection site available to the public targets a wider audience and provides a more positive impact. USDA can approve pharmacies, clinics with onsite pharmacies, as well as hospitals to serve as permanent collection sites. In our community, there are approximately five permanent collection sites, one being TPD, and the rest being a few Walgreens and a CVS, and none are on the south side of town, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you.
We have been outreach, our league committees have been outreach with corporate headquarters of CVS to determine if they would be able to locate one of their permanent collection sites at their CVS that is located on south side, there is no Walgreens available on the south side. They have let us know that their plans for these programs in Tallahassee do not include a second location, because they're very focused on trying to get locations in other cities that do not have any at all. There are other options for collection sites on the south side of town, we look forward to continuing to work with your staff on this, and please know that the League of Women Voters supports this issue and is willing to help. Thank you.
And thank you as well for your leadership in this very important disposal role. Any other speakers at this time? All right, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and share with you that, you know, we are going to break at five for a recognition for retirees, a special event, so we'll try our best to push through our agenda and then reconvene for the public hearings after that. Mr. Administrator, item 18, I think, at this time, no, actually, we're gonna go to 25 and 26 on the motion that was provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item number 25 is a bid award, or award of a contract, the top recommended firm to an RFP for research services for the Division of Tourism. This item has been budgeted, the recommended firm met our MBE targets for this work, but not the WBE target, although they did do a good faith estimate on that, as certified by our MWBE offices. As such, our recommendation is for option one, we have no speakers on this item, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, you're gonna move option one, seconded by Commissioner DeLuge, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed by the same sign? All right, motion passes for 25. Next item is number 26.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this item seeks your approval to award a contract for the Division of Tourism, contracted marketing and advertising and public relations services. As included in the analysis before you Commissioners, there was an RFP issued for these services, and the RFP Evaluation Committee has recommended the top-ranked firm. This item is budgeted, the top-ranked firm will satisfy our MWBE targets for these contracts. Again, I have no speakers on this item, and we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Additionally, I don't have any Commissioners in queue to speak. Their motion, move options one and two by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner DeLuge. I do have Commissioner in queue to speak, prior to voting, Commissioner Dozier, sorry.
That's okay, I really have, completely, Dozier and DeLuge sound a whole lot alike, everybody does that. And we have the three days before, it's true. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, a lot of work went into this item, into the presentations, I'm glad we got a number of responses, and Carrie and Minor, you're here today, thank you and your team for your work in the past and for bidding on this RFP. Ms. County Administrator, I had only one question, just for clarification, and I'm not sure if you want to turn this over to Carrie Post or not, I just want to have a little bit of clarity about the two RFPs. We went through a process to separate the contract into two for this round that we hadn't done before, and, you know, the recommendation is to award the contract to the same firm, and we talked about this a little bit in briefing, but I'm really reflecting forward. Is this experience giving you a better understanding in our staff, and so we will only look at one contract in the future? Do we learn any lessons? I just, I wouldn't mind hearing a little bit more about that piece.
First Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Dozier, I think you're right, the answer to whether I want to take it or give it to Carrie, always, the answer is always, depends on how hard it is, so, but with that one, it's a pretty straightforward one, but I think Carrie could do a better job expounding on that, so Carrie, you want to come up?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Commissioner, to answer your question, the intent was in splitting them into two, that has been kind of an industry best practices with destination marketing organizations around the state and really around the country, because that is a way nowadays, there's a lot of firms that do specialize and do best-in-class work. Because Leon County's contract has been bid as one for so many years, we did entertain that option and moved forward with that, because also that does bring increased competition and increased vendors to be able to participate by allowing that. So, I think it was the right thing to do, to again, to see what responses we got, and in that respect, that was the goal, to get more vendors to submit, and we did, so that was good. As far as whether to do it again, I think we'd have to examine it again and look at some things, but I do think the intent and purpose was to bring in increased competition, and that was accomplished.
Thank you, so, other than, I simply note, there was very close scoring for two firms in the smaller contract, so it was easier to work with one firm versus two, that, in retrospect, is that, was that kind of the thinking, that to keep this contract unified, that may be better going forward than separating it? I understand the competition and trying to bring more people in, but the decision to award it to one?
I believe in the review committee, it was a function of a couple different factors, one is the scoring was so close.
Yes.
We're talking three points. The other is, there was a lot of discussion and deliberation in the review committees with having it be a vendor out of market that also had demonstrated not as thorough knowledge of the destination product, that certainly they could be brought up to speed and to learn, but the learning curve was discussed, so a lot of it was determined on only having a three-point differential, and having a firm in market that had the destination product knowledge is, I believe, what motivated the committee to make the recommendation that they did.
Okay. Thank you for that, I just wanted to understand that, because we looked at separating these contracts and approved that, and wanted to make sure, understood why we merged them back. The last question, I guess, and, Ms. County Administrator, I'll look back at you to this, but also, Carrie, you may be, he may toss it back to you again, as he does, right? So, we attended the Greenville trip, the Chamber-sponsored trip together, and I was pretty tickled, I'm not sure if others know this, but we walked to one of the dinners, and Carrie, you noted Greenville Visitor's Office, their Visit Greenville office, we walked past and got so excited, and walked right in, and, you know, just cold, and got to talk to them, and you're always looking for those new ideas and new ways of marketing. We hear about this a lot, and we talk about it a lot, I'm not sure we've ever seen a full-fledged presentation of the marketing contract, of what the plans are, where we are, I mean, maybe not the contracts, right, but the content. We see the visitor guide, other things like that, but I would be very interested in having a presentation or an agenda item in the fall to really see where we've been, where we're going, and to build off of the RFP response, so that we can fit that in with what we're seeing in other communities and hearing from folks in our own community. Ms. County Administrator, would that be acceptable?
Happy to do that, Carrie, is that timing about right?
Sounds perfect.
Okay.
Do you need a motion, are you good?
We can bring it back, we had it scheduled, we were anticipating it, but that timing works for us, so we'll bring it back.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna trust the committee's unanimous recommendations here, but I am somewhat tailing on the end of Commissioner Dozier's comments, given the three-point differential, and we split those contracts, and, I want to use the word bait and switch, but if we separated those contracts and put them out and split them, but after doing so, decided to unify them, because logistically it would be more convenient and all of that, that could easily be problematic in our future when we do that. And I think that when we approach that in the future, there has to be language to protect us, to say something like, we reserve or hold, we hold the discretionary, whatever, to combine, if based upon factors of nearness of number, and some of the points that Carrie mentioned, but you have to put that stuff in language before that we can bait, and then we can switch it on the back end, if that's what we need to do for our own convenience. So, I respect the committee's, their collective judgment in this instance, but in the future, we need language that's gonna cover us when we do two unique, separate, and then we change our minds on the back end.
So noted, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Motion's been made by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner DeLuge, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. All right, we have dispensed with, thank you, Carrie, we have dispensed with item 25 and 26. I think we can move on at this time to the item 18.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item number 18 is your 2019 Florida Legislative Session Final Report. It also includes a request to schedule a board workshop to establish our legislative priorities for 2020, as well as our 2020 Community Legislative Dialogue Meeting. Andy Johnson is on deck and prepared to provide a brief presentation, answer any questions you might have. I should also note, and he would probably do this himself, but I also saw, there they are, our contract lobbyists, Jeff Sharkey and Taylor Beal, and I saw Lena Juarez here a minute ago, and we thank and appreciate them. And with that, Mr. Chairman, Andy is prepared to provide a brief presentation.
Andy, I think we all would love to hear how hard work you do, so why don't you come on up and give us a couple of minutes of your time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. As you all know, each year, we present a final report to the board summarizing the significant legislation that happened during the past legislative session. So today, I'm happy to provide just a quick overview of the report that's before you, of course. of course. As we do each year, this report is very detailed and comprehensive, so I'll just summarize a few of the highlights for you today, but of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. As Vince mentioned, Jeff and his team are here as well. Just a few of the high notes. Commissioners first, just the highlights from the state budget. This year's budget is going to be the largest one in state history, a shade under $91 billion after vetoes, which is about a 2.5% increase over last year's total budget. With regard to the county's interests, the budget includes a significant increase for water quality and springs protection projects. It did reduce funding, but did continue to provide some funding to continue Visit Florida for another year, and we expect the legislature to go back and evaluate that in the next year. Continued funding for the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund, and also roughly double the current year funding for affordable housing, which includes a significant amount reserved for housing recovery in areas that were impacted by Hurricane Michael. With respect to the county's projects, we did have two projects included in the legislature's final budget, Leon Works, the Expo and the Junior Apprenticeship, as well as the Orchard Pond Greenway Trail Project, unfortunately. Both of those were caught up in the vetoes that were issued by the governor when he signed the budget. Notwithstanding that, however, Commissioners, the budget does include funding for several major road projects in Leon County, including Capital Circle Southwest, Woodville Highway as part of FDOT's five-year work program, as well as $125,000 to continue the county's Veterans Treatment Court. In terms of policy issues, Commissioners, I would tell you that the theme of preemptions continued along with the new leadership in the House and Senate, although I am happy to report that several of some of the more onerous or burdensome ones were significantly reduced or amended out of bills along the way. But just a few highlights of some of the significant bills that did pass affecting local governments. First, you'll recall the tree preemption bill that we've been looking at the last few years, legislature did finally pass a bill in that regard, although it was much scaled back from what we've been looking at in the last two years or so. The bill that passed, House Bill 1159, at the end of the day, if you're a private property owner, you've got a tree, you think that it needs to come down, if you have a certified arborist that can document that tree might be a danger to hazard, or a hazard to persons or property, that bill allows that tree to come down without having to require a permit or any sort of application from the local government. Of course, that might have some impacts on our canopy road protections, and we're in the process of, right now, of looking at some potential proposed LDC amendments to address that and become conformant with the bill. Also, the legislature did pass a texting while driving ban this year. As you know, Commissioners, this has been one of the board's legislative priorities for several years. That bill does two things. Number one, makes texting while driving a primary offense, and also prohibits drivers from any kind of a use of a handheld mobile device while you're in a school zone or an active work zone. Also of note, the legislature did pass House Bill 771, which was going to be a preemption on local regulation of plastic straws, although the governor, interestingly, vetoed that one. And I will mention too, that item number 20 on your agenda today presents a discussion of plastic straws and provides a range of different options for the board to consider, should you wish to take a look at reducing or eliminating the use of single-use plastic straws. Again, Commissioners, just a very, very high-level overview, just scratching the surface of the detailed report that's before you. Happy to answer any questions you might have. And in closing, next year's legislative session is an early one, it starts in January. Committee weeks are going to start just in a couple of months, in late September. So, staff recommends scheduling the 2020 Legislative Priorities Workshop for September the 24th, as you'll see in your options, as well as the Community Legislative Dialogue Meeting for February the 14th, which would be the fifth week midpoint of the 2020 Legislative Session. So with that, Commissioners, that concludes my presentation. We recommend options one through three.
Thank you, Andy. Great job. Commissioner Dozier, okay, we do have a motion, I know that Commissioner, okay, and a second. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Andy. Just a couple of quick things. The Community Development and Housing item, that was House Bill 7103. In light of what we're doing today, or I hope we do today, with the land trust and other issues, is there anything we should know about this bill as it impacts our desire to have more affordable housing? Is this another tool? I didn't track this as much. There was a lot of discussion about housing throughout session, so could you unpack that a little?
Sure, absolutely. That bill does have some pretty significant provisions related to affordable housing, the biggest one being inclusionary housing ordinances. An inclusionary housing ordinance is something that a city or a county commissioner or council may enact that would require a developer to make certain affordable housing contributions. An early version of the bill would have prohibited that entirely. What ultimately passed is that local governments can have inclusionary housing ordinances, although you would be required to completely offset the cost of any affordable housing requirements, either through some sort of an incentive, like impact fee reduction or a density bonus, or something along those lines.
Thank you. And Ms. County Administrator, if my understanding is correct, the city did or does have an inclusionary housing ordinance. It may not have produced the effect the city had hoped, and I'm glad that they are also going to work with the land trust, and we're looking for other options. Is that correct? So this one is not a big opportunity for us? We have tried it in the past. Would that be fair?
That's fair.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had, and Andy, you may be able to answer this, but I will also say that, Mr. Jeff Sharkey, we had a conversation regarding Leon Works and apprenticeship programs, so I'm not sure if either of you have comments about this, but Jeff, I asked you a question. I'm sure you were getting a lot of calls after the Leon Works grant funding was, or the funding was vetoed. It looks like what we're seeing right now is more energy, more focus on apprenticeship programs and workforce training from the state than we have seen historically, and that's exciting. So, the question I asked you briefly, and I just wondered if we could posture it here for some work in the next few months, is a request for an event, as successful as it has been over the years for Leon Works, our best bet for next year? Or should we explore options, and I would love to tee this up as a partnership with the city, because we're working on workforce issues so much through OEV, should we explore options for a different kind of legislative request next year that supports more of those types of apprenticeship programs or workforce training that the governor seems to be?
Andy, before you start, surprisingly enough, Commissioner Dozier, there is discussion with the city, with the mayor, as well as the school board.
Okay, and your mayor chair?
Yes, and it's going to actually be a part of the agenda this week.
Fantastic.
So, thanks for a great intro.
There you go. Okay, well, I'm thrilled by that, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I suppose, I mean, Andy, you and Jeff were both nodding throughout, and yes. Are we on the right track here, exploring other options?
I think absolutely. We know that the junior apprenticeship program in particular is very well-aligned with what the state wants to fund. In fact, although they didn't fund the Leon Works, our request for Leon Works Expo and Junior Apprenticeship, the budget, the budget that was adopted and signed by the governor did include a substantial amount of grant funding for these sorts of projects. So of course, we're going to be exploring that as well. We're happy to bring back several different options for the board to consider when we come back for Legislative Priorities Workshop in that area.
That's a good note as well, that grant funding may be more of what we need to go after versus an appropriation. I'm a huge fan of junior apprentice. I think the full-fledged apprenticeship program for young adults, for adults, is a nut we really need to crack here. So, thank you very much. Mr. Chair, that's all the questions I've got. Thanks.
Mr. DeLuge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to weigh in and say, Andy, thanks so much, you make us look good. And it's a tough spot to be in sometimes, being here in Leon County, because we end up being kind of right across the street and get thrown into a lot of things. I know the Florida Association of Counties oftentimes leans on us as the representative county, because we can be ready to go, so I appreciate you being there. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, and then move ahead.
Mr. Chairman, no doubt, unless Jeff has a different opinion, I still don't think that Leon County is getting our fair share of money. I still think that we're overlooked, forgotten. I still believe that as the capital community, that we ought to be receiving a payment in lieu of the occupation of state's government. And I know the argument, well, we give out these jobs, 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 jobs. I ain't talking about that. We have great, talented, we have the most educated workforce in the county, period. But we ain't getting enough money, Commissioners, and we really ought to be on the warpath. I realize that the last several governors don't want to talk to nobody. They too proud and arrogant to talk to Commissioners, our staff, this Commissioner, even his chairperson. Will this particular governor talk with Leon County officials? We've tried with previous governors, and they don't want to talk. We have a poor relationship with the governor's office, and you know, you give up even reaching across the street. And the fact that we're across the street from them, we really like from here to Pluto, it's just that far away. I think that the chairman, the mayor, all the bigs that represent us, need to go in together and try to, we need reconciliation. We can't talk to the governor of Florida, and we're hosting state's government. I'd like to see us work on that. I'd like to see the chairman keep pounding. I was not successful. Others have not been. And you know, I didn't make any financial contributions to the campaign of a governor. I don't know what it takes to get in to see one of those. I used to work for one, and about the last time I actually talked to a governor at length was when I served as Special Assistant to Lawton Charles. Republicans won't let you talk to them. So, that's what I see. Title I schools, some scores came out, I see School Board Member Jones here. We continue to have difficulty in Leon County. And even though the state's Department of Education is approximately within three miles of every school that's having reading difficulty, I don't see squat that the state has done, is doing, surrounded by the schools closest to its Department of Education, applying any new methodology, applying any new monies, applying any new special curricula. And the state of Florida continues to let little children suffer, fall off the cliff, perform miserably, and commensurate to the level of what their scores say and the performance of many of our children. The response to that is just not adequate. And I think that, Mr. Chair, we have to, you know, be it a resolution, but we have to support the school system, the school board, the superintendent, and all of us really, really, Florida's capital county, children shouldn't be. And not only is the Department of Education within three miles, but the FAMU School of Education and the FSU School of Education is all within three miles of most of the failing schools. And I'm simply not impressed that this aggregation of power in higher education and PhDs, there are probably more PhDs per 10,000 people than anywhere in the state of Florida here in Tall ahassee. And it's not connecting with enlarging the performance of students. And I don't think we can be silent. Silence is not the answer on what's going on, because you can, you know, prison beds are projected off third-grade reading level. And based on what we saw off of them scores that came out the other day, we might as well go ahead and build some new prisons. So if we're not putting the money on the front end, and helping the school board, if they got some new programs, some new ideas, I know Florida education ain't got none, the governor ain't got none, FAMU and FSU ain't got none, but we need to gather, because you can just predict, y'all, it's just too easy to predict.
Commissioner Proctor.
Ain't read.
I cannot.
You ain't gonna make it.
More, but one of the items that's in the options is our workshop, and I think that would be the opportune time to continue down this road. And believe me, I serve in a capacity at a school that's not located within three miles of the Department of Education, but we experience some of the same issues that you're speaking of.
Right.
I appreciate it.
And also, Mr. Chairman, just close this out by saying, I think that vocational has to be lifted up higher, and with respect to that inclusionary housing thingy, there's an escape clause in inclusionary housing that allows the developers to buy their way out of that, and they can put in so much money and don't have to follow that rule.
Thank you again. We do have a motion, as previously mentioned, I believe the motion was made by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner, no, maybe it was made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. Our next item, Mr. Administrator. Thank you, Andy.
I'm going to defer to the county attorney on the side.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the item that lays out the recruiting process for the next county attorney. It was another one of those agenda items that I really was uncomfortable helping to write, but I do want to express my appreciation to the county administrator, and to Alan Rosenzweig, and to Candace Wilson, and especially Andy Johnson, who helped put together the slick brochure that is one of the attachments in the materials. Let me put it this way, I would apply for this job. So, in light of the board's vote, we have put together this program that includes, if you would, an updated job description, an updated ad that is much better than the one I answered to 28, 29 years ago, and this brochure describing Leon County as it is today, which I think is a great recruiting tool for folks who, especially those who may not be currently residing in Florida, but those who are in the southern, west or east part of the state who may not know enough about Leon County. So anyhow, we're requesting that you approve this. Vince was going to give you a little bit of a rundown on the chronology, what we expect the chronology to be, and ultimately, we will bring you back, after all the ads and all of the applications are reviewed, we will bring you back a short list of probably three to five folks when the time comes. So I don't know if you want to go through that.
Well, thank you, Herb. And Commissioners, it's all there, I won't belabor it on page nine, it's all there in one page, sort of a snapshot, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have a motion this time? Move option one, do any, motion has been made, move option one, A through E, seconded by Commissioner DeLuge. I do have two Commissioners in queue, Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner Proctor, prior to our vote.
Mr. Chair, I actually, I fully support the motion, appreciate the work. I wanted to raise a related issue after this motion, after you take a vote.
Okay.
If you can come back to me.
We'll come back to you. Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at clause C with this package and option one, and we're asking the county administrator and the county attorney singularly to screen these applicants and for them to pare down a short list for our consideration. I think that this process should possibly include other names, otherwise, we could just, you know, ask them to make, do all the heavy lifting, investigating, and leave it to their singular judgment. I think that there should be others in this process under C. So, who made the motion? I would ask the maker of the motion to expand element C to include representatives of other entities, stakeholders of the county in this process. And I think that similar to, and I will cite the example of the search by the city for its police chief. And I don't know if a county attorney is equivalent or, you know, anything that important, you know, but the way the city has broadened up and But the way the city has broadened up and expanded the base of persons who would be at the front end of and through all of the processes, I think that the county attorney role, I think it's that important and significant. It is a role which has the potential to be fulfilled for 30 years. If precedent having been established, Herb Teela has served it for 30 years. And the next person we're looking at, you know, it's a generational position, and that person would likely be a generational member of county, as an instrument of county government. And that's why, given its importance to zoning, its importance to all of our regulations, its importance to almost everything we do, I think that a two-person rodeo ain't enough persons. And if the city had the wisdom to provide a broad system for a police chief, our county government perhaps would be as wise for a generational-type role.
So a motion's been made by Commissioner Proctor to include a community stakeholder in the process. Do I have a second to that motion? Add it to C?
Add it to C.
I would not accept that for two reasons. One, I mean, we're not hiring a police chief, we're hiring an attorney for our board, which I think is considerably different than a public position of police chief. And as I understand it, we would, you would conduct an initial evaluation, you might have 50 applicants, and you would want to, I think, pare them down, as it sounds like, to a smaller number, at which time, number two, we could open it up to a broader discussion of our board and however we wanted to handle it, I think. But I don't, I don't think it's remotely similar to hiring, or the city's hiring a police chief. We are hiring an attorney, our board, the seven of us here are hiring an attorney largely to serve our county commission board. And so, for those reasons, I just would like my motion to stand as it is. And we will be able to review those applicants that are brought forward at a later time.
Chairman, I offer substitute motion with the elements included in C, which I outlined, because police chief and a county attorney, they both deal with law and they both deal with discretion. And it's a significant role that deals with the law and it deals with discretion. And for the other reasons I've already cited, I offer that included in number C as a substitute motion.
Okay. A substitute motion's been made. Do we have a second to add that to our, or a second for that motion? Seeing no second, we are back to our original motion that was made by Commissioner Lindley and seconded by Commissioner Deluge. Seeing no other Commissioners in queue to speak, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Okay, I promised we would continue to push through. We'll go on to item... Yes. Oh, that's, sorry, I didn't recognize you. Commissioner Dozier, I promised I'd come back to you after the vote.
You're too quick on the computer there. That's just fine. I agree, Commissioner Lindley, and am glad to support that motion, as I said before. I like the process that's established. However, I also wanted to take this opportunity to reflect on our hiring process in general. I've thought a lot about this since our last meeting. I'm sure others have as well. As I said at that time, I think we put ourselves and any potential internal candidates in a challenging position when we have an agenda item that presents options, hire this fabulous internal candidate or do a national search, because it looks like if we go into a search, we are not supportive of the internal candidate. I would like to make a motion for an agenda item to flesh out a policy that we would do a search for the two positions hired by this commission in the future, which could be waived at any time by the commission. But just make that statement upfront so that we have an opportunity to reflect on that and waive that policy if we wanted to go with an internal candidate instead of seeing that name and getting in that challenging position in the future. So we do this rarely, but that would be my motion.
Okay, I think we've established that with the policy for the attorney, correct? Moving forward or...
Mr. Chair, I think, yes. This process now is a search, but in the future, and it may be a very long time in the future when we look to hire someone else, this... Leon County is unusual. This will be our fourth hire in the last 30 years. That's not typical for local governments. So this is just getting ahead of the next time we have a position come open.
Yeah, understood. Commissioner Lindley.
I second that and comment. I agree. I think best practices these days in hiring is to have a broader search, and I would be perfectly happy to support that. I mean, I believe when Herb Teela was hired, it was from a broader search as well throughout. It wasn't an in-house promotion.
There was no in-house.
There was no in-house. But nevertheless, we, yeah. So I'm supportive of that as a general...
I think we can capture it as an agenda item to be brought back to discuss policy moving forward for both the county administrator and the county attorney.
Thank you. Yes.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Commissioner Deluge, sorry I missed you, and then I'll come to Commissioner Minor.
Just weighing in support, and I think you made a comment earlier that, understanding that every situation's unique and we open the door to say, we can waive this, but the default will be, we'll go to a search. I think that's valid. I think most of us look around and think, there are plenty of great internal candidates, but you're right. And it's hard on the internal candidate, it's hard on the external candidates when they know somebody's in the pipe. So if we have a policy that says the default for those two positions is that we do a national search, then we go for there. I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Deluge. Moving on to item number 20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 20 comes at your direction from the May meeting, Commissioners, and provides an analysis and seeks your consideration of options available to the board to reduce or eliminate single-use plastic straws in Leon County. Again, Commissioners, we've provided the analysis before you on these options, and we're seeking your direction at this time. Happy to answer any questions you might have. And we have three speakers who have filled out cards and wish to speak on this item.
All right. We have, I think we'll recognize our three speakers first. That's the agreement of the board. If you would, go ahead and announce those names and speak your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First speaker, Mike Mitchell.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Mike Mitchell. I'm the vice president of Sustainable Tallahassee. I live at 4250 Benchmark Trace. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on agenda item number 20, the consideration of options to reduce or eliminate single-use plastic straws in Leon County. Sustainable Tallahassee is a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting environmental, economic, and social sustainability in the Tallahassee regional area through education and collaboration. We are especially focused on how sustainability impacts and is impacted by energy, transportation, water, waste, and local food. One of Sustainable Tallahassee's many committees, the Super Arts Committee, focuses on waste stewardship. The committee's goal is to minimize solid waste disposal while increasing reuse and recycling, and the elimination of plastic straws represents a significant area of interest to this committee. Sustainable Tallahassee is encouraged and grateful for this conversation on what our community can do on the topic of single-use plastics. We are proud to be members of a coalition of other environmental and sustainability groups currently looking at this issue, and we look forward to working with the county's Office of Resource Stewardship as you direct this evening. It's my hope that Sustainable Tallahassee can continue to serve as a resource and partner in this and other efforts as we're currently doing with the Capital Area Sustainability Compact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Kim Ross.
Good afternoon. I'm Kim Ross, 1203 Buckingham Drive. I'm the executive director of Rethink Energy Florida. Good to see you all today. Rethink Energy Florida stands in support of moving forward with an ordinance not only addressing straw use and distribution, but also other forms of single-use plastics. As was just mentioned, Rethink Energy Florida has joined with several other organizations across the city to research the effort and come to consensus on the best way forward. We started this before hearing about your activity and are pleased to see that you all are interested in moving forward as well. We ourselves are studying the issue and we feel, I feel we are well on the way to consensus, although we're still in discussions and having conversations about the best way forward. In particular, Rethink Energy Florida is determined that the single-use straw issue not pit the environmental community against the disability community. I think everybody feels that way. As such, we did from the start invite a representative of the disability community who's not able to be here today to the table. Your staff did an excellent job of exploring those options and the pros and cons of those options. I'm hopeful that moving forward, that that'll include the disability concerns. And I also provided for you all via email, a draft ordinance, because I know your staff found a lot of the ordinances that are across the state of Florida. This is a draft ordinance from the city of Sarasota where they did work more closely with the disability community. I've provided it to you all, I also provided it to staff. I'm not convinced that it's a model ordinance, so please don't take that. I think, I am convinced that Leon County could be the first county to develop such a model ordinance that other counties and municipalities will look to, and I hope that you will, will take that as your angle and goal. For today, I would love to see you direct staff to move forward with developing a recommended ordinance addressing single-use plastics. I encourage you to be broad in your direction, to allow staff to explore potential ordinances broader in scope. And then I also encourage you all to direct staff to work, as I'm sure they're willing to, with the already-formed coalition to ensure thoroughness and address all of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Good evening again. Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive, League of Women Voters.
I'm Linda Lee, League of Women Voters. I'm chair of the Climate Change and Sustainability.
Mija Calder, also with the League of Women Voters. I'm pleased to be here.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, for taking up this topic and discussion and for considering Governor DeSantis's invitation to regulate this at the local level. As your staff points out, it is aligned with your strategic initiatives and your five-year targets. However, I also want to remind you that pollution, plastics pollution is much bigger than just straws. So while we're starting with what I would term the low-hanging fruit, we still have additional efforts that can go even beyond this. We are supportive of this item. I'll remind you in 2015 that this county passed a resolution that specifically stated, and I'm quoting from that resolution, "Leon County is committed to the long-term goal of reducing the harms of plastic pollution on our fragile environment and committed to ensuring a thriving, attractive, and safe environment for current and future residents and tourists." So to that end, we'd like to point out three things to supplement the report that you've received with your staff. One, almost without exception, all of the local regulations that apply to restrictions on entities with the local government to provide a service on public property also apply to entities conducting activities on public property which could, private property, excuse me, public property which could be extended to food trucks in right-of-ways. Food for thought. Two other items, there is Florida statute 500.90 preempts the regulation of polystyrene to the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, but it provides an express exemption to local governments to allow them to restrict the use of polystyrene on public property by contractors and by vendors on public property. 14 local governments have imposed these prohibitions. So not straws, polystyrene, but still in the world of plastics. And then lastly, Florida statute 403.7033 preempts a regulation of plastic bags to the state. We know that already, we've also mentioned that. But the statute's been challenged and declared unconstitutional by the Miami-Dade County Court in 2017. It's currently on appeal in the Third District Court. As a consequence, seven local governments moved ahead to ban plastic bags and/or single-use plastics citywide and on city property and/or by contractors or permateses. So a few things to think about as you're considering this, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Certainly do I lead off, but I'm going to lead off on this one. So, and since I have the mic and the little, the computer, I get that discretion. In a, in the world of work and in the world of public schools, we try to model behavior for our students. So I can't conceivably ask sixth, seventh, and eighth graders not to use their cellphone during the school day if there are teachers and supervising staff that are using their cellphones during the school day. It's important, I think, that we be the model as an organization in Leon County, all of the offices, all of the folks that work in Leon County, and many of the events that are sponsored by Leon County. I think it's important that we lead the way prior to asking or forcing upon local business owners or our community. I think it's important that we see how it impacts what we do and that we experience what it's like to not have single-use plastic straws. Someone brought it to my attention today that many of our coffee purchases, if you buy coffee, include a single-use plastic straw as a stirring stick. I think it's important that before we travel down that road, that we are a model, both for our neighbors over at the city as well as the businesses and the community at large. That's my two cents, and I promise I would be brief, so I'll move on to several other speakers on the subject. Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you very much. Yeah, a couple of things. One, these are reusable straws that we are all up here sipping from, by the way. And I wanted to thank Fred Chester of our staff for also giving me a little item here. It's a straw made from plants, not petroleum, and these are from Blaze Pizza. And I guess part of my comment on this right now is I want to really salute the local businesses that are already, one, not automatically giving you a plastic straw in your beverage, and, two, moving to various creative ways of addressing this, while at the same time, Kim, being respectful that having a plastic straw is an option for people who will be more comfortable, who have a disability that will make them more comfortable or necessary. And I think all of the ordinances and things I've looked at have taken that into account, that there are hospitals and all sorts of, maybe not all sorts of, but quite a few different areas where you would want to exempt a ban if that's what this board is for. I'm not really for a complete ban at this time, though I'd be curious to see how something might work out. I wanted to say, really, I was pleasantly surprised when Governor DeSantis vetoed the legislature's, you know, chronic effort to keep local governments from taking action. This was great that he did this. We still are banned, we are preempted from doing anything with plastic bags, though I agree, Ms. Irwin, that there are efforts going forward, and I think we may win this one eventually. At this time, I just wanted to say to people who've been writing emails and so forth, we know this is a small thing, we know this isn't the end-all, be-all of single-use plastics by any means, but it is a step forward. So I'm very interested, I'd be interested in seeing what the rest of you think about having entities conducting business on county property abiding by what is option one here, which is expanding, or, excuse me, it's option three, I guess, expanding or limiting the use of single-use straws on any county property or for any events that we have as a county. So within our family, the county family and on county property, we would not sell or distribute single-use plastic straws, not use them. And I would like to include styrofoam as well as the single-use plastic straws. I think one of the best things we can do as a county is try to speak to your third graders, actually, to try to educate and get our community to think about this as a, single-use plastic straws as a symbol of the greater problem. And I was talking to one of your, one of our school board members just this morning, and she said, yeah, definitely, third graders are the way to go. That's your best, your best approach to educating their moms and dads and the rest of us. So I really would like to support. Personally, I would like to move option one, which is expanding education of our internal staff and the community through marketing, through public information, encouraging, and even saluting local businesses that have already stepped up to the plate and are making a change in their own practices. And I would like us to direct staff to draft the policy regarding sale or distribution on any property or facility. the policy regarding sale or distribution on any property or facilities or county events. So those would be my two choices at this time, Options 1 and 3.
1 and 3 or 1 and 2?
1 and 3 includes plastic straws and styrofoam. Number 2 is just plastic straws only on the county property. So mine are, my choice would be 1 and 3. So there may be a conversation on this, and I look forward to hearing that.
You have a second for 1 and 3?
1 and 3.
Okay. We do have several Commissioners in queue to speak. I'd like to hear from them. Again, we are on a hard timeline. I'm going to remind you of that. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I brought some gifts. I saw you got your plastic, your multi-use plastic straw and your plant-based straw. I actually brought some metal straws, which I didn't know were a thing until about, I guess, six months, a year ago. So feel free to take one. I think they're about $0.40 apiece, so on your gift form, make sure you declare this $0.40 straw. Really well-written agenda item, I think, was it Tessa or Maggie that wrote this? Really, really well done. You know, in general, I believe that government should always be reluctant or hesitant to implement policy that directly impacts the private sector. I think, I think the free market and the public's interaction with the free market is usually the best approach for enacting change, but there are cases where government can and should play a role, such as, you know, seat belts, smoking in public areas, that type of thing. I've done a lot of research on this, the agenda item and outside that. And, you know, there are 275 million metric tons of plastic waste produced each year. And plastic, as you all know, degrades very slowly, taking hundreds or thousands of years. And as it degrades, it disintegrates into fine particles, microplastics. Those microplastics enter our water system, creating a whole host of health problems with just the plastics themselves, but also the chemicals that are fixed to the plastics that we ingest, causing harm to us as well as animals. A recent survey showed that plastics, microplastics exist in 94% of tap water that's been sampled in the U.S. and in nearly all brands of bottled water. So we're ingesting it already. Plastic straws really have a very small portion of all plastic waste. We know that. This is not going to solve our plastic waste problem. But as the Chairman mentioned, I mean, every step is a symbol. What we can't do is rely on this, think we have a moral victory, and walk away and not do anything more. But I think this is a very important first step. A couple of issues that I think many of you have had conversations with people about, people with disabilities actually have a, many of them have a need for plastic straws. Paper straws can pose a choking hazard for many people. Metal straws can be a safety hazard for many people with disabilities, so we need to be very cognizant of that. Today, I spoke with the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association about what their position was. Their position statewide is advocating for request-only. So when you enter a restaurant, you're not given a straw unless you request one. Restaurants have some concerns about this. You know, they need a reliable supply vendor. You don't want to order biodegradable forks and knives and then not have them arrive. You can't really do business with your restaurant if you don't have people, things for people to eat with. Also, extra cost. And there's, with the half dozen restaurants that have closed in just the last two months, we need to be very concerned and aware of what undue burden we might place upon them. I used to work in the restaurant industry when I was raising money for college. You know, the margins there are razor-thin, and especially here in Tallahassee with such a seasonal influx of customers. All that being said, this is a really important issue. It's a small part of all the plastic waste, but it's a symbolic measure that we can and should take to start paving the way for what we hope will, you know, the free market and the public will start to embrace in greater numbers. So I understand your motion, Commissioner Lindley. I respect it. What I'd like to do is offer a substitute amendment or an additional Option 4, asking county staff to present us with options, fully fleshed-out options for a full ban, as well as the request number 3 that you said, which is the prohibition of the use of plastic straws on county property as well as polystyrene. So I think what I'd like to see is an agenda item that presents those options to us, number 1, number 3, but also number 4, with county staff working with people with disabilities to make sure that there are exceptions in that. I know some other localities have already gone down that road and have worked with the disabled communities to come up with exceptions at work, but also working with the Capital Area Sustainability Compact, FRLA, Legal Women Voters, and other groups to come up with a good, sensible solution that acknowledges the problem, that takes a solid first step toward a county-wide ban, but also presenting options for us in different degrees that we can consider in a future agenda item. So that's my friendly amendment that I hope you'll accept.
Commissioner Lindley.
Right. Yeah, you know, I think, my thought today is I don't want us to move directly to a ban, and I don't think anybody on the board is quite ready for that anyway. I'm interested in seeing some, you know, some different options of implementing. So I think, you know, I guess my concern is that we're not saying, and we're definitely moving towards a ban. I honestly think it's kind of more thoughtful to see how the local, I mean, I was interested to hear how the food and beverage industry is responding to this. So this would give us more options. I guess I would be happy with, if that's a broad stroke, a broader look, that could include, could include a lot of ways of implementing what I think our overall goal is, which is reduction, reduction, reduction of this use. I will say, I spoke with somebody from the disability community, and one of the things I was told was they would rather not have to ask for a straw, that it would be, you know, that it would be somehow, I don't know how this would happen, but somehow more just freely made, so they wouldn't have to say, "Yeah, I need a, I need a plastic straw." So I'm not sure if that can be incorporated, but the folks in the disability community are concerned about that. They don't want to be singled out as having to say, "Well, I know everybody else in the room doesn't need a straw, but I do." And, you know, so that's just, was a consideration I hadn't thought about as well. So that's the longest answer in the world, to say, "Okay, let's go with it. I'll go with 4."
Okay, so I think we're back where we were, correct? You're not accepting the substitute to the motion?
Oh, he was changing the original motion. You weren't making sense.
My motion was to ask Commissioner Lindley to accept number 4 along with 1 and 3 on a future agenda item.
So he's just amending an opposite, yeah.
Okay, and you did agree to that?
No, I would accept a greater exploration of the issue. That it could include a look at the ban, but I'm not interested in saying that's where we're going.
Yes, Commissioner. I'd like to have a further, personally, I'd like to have a further discussion with the FRLA, the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, about more detail about what that, what that has done. The agenda item's very thorough in taking a look at what other localities have done, but when this comes back for a future agenda item, that's a little more, this agenda I'm out of here is really just asking for our direction, which is the perfect first step. Going forward for the next agenda item, I'd like to have a little more detail on what those options would be, 1, 3, and 4. And I think I would not want to limit us in that future discussion, but rather add number 4 as one possible alternative or...
Yeah, I think 4 directly says prepare to have ordinance banning, and that's...
With certain exceptions, which would need to be fleshed out.
Well, it says, "Prepare a draft ordinance banning the sale or distribution of single-use plastic." So minus preparing the draft ordinance, I could agree with the staff researching further.
Yeah.
But I would not want to say draft an ordinance banning. I would not support that at this time.
I'm okay with that.
So basically, it's a very, so you're really not saying Option 4. You're just saying 1 and 3 and fleshing out more options.
4, yeah, yeah, exactly.
That are in for short of drafting.
Maybe not, we need a draft ordinance, but basically coming up with some options for us.
Yeah, I think, I think that if we, if I can capture it correctly, 1 and 3, and then skipping that first line of 4, to move to including options and recommendations 4. Is that correct? If I'm not, if I'm wrong, tell me.
Yes, yeah, I mean, like, you know, number 4 would have some exemptions, such as for people with disabilities.
Understood.
You know, talking to FRLA about, about what their, you know, what their positions are with, you know, the restaurant industry here. I just, I don't want to take that off the table when it comes to an agenda item for us to do.
Sounds like kind of what Kim Ross said, which just draft the best policy we can, reducing a model. Are you understanding this, Mr. County Administrator?
We are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I think we've got clarity on that. We're interpreting that as a new Option 4, but I think we've captured everything. So we'll bring that back to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, several to speak now. Let's, Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I really like to chew on my straw. And this one is not a good chew, you know? And I like to bite my straw and gnaw on it. It's going to be bad if we have to come up with these things. This is not going to work. I was wondering if the county's, Rashonda and Mr. Pell will prepare to get us some china with for our county Thanksgiving dinner. Y'all are going to get china and silver for Christmas, and, because we're not going to have plastic, and we shouldn't have plastic at Leon County. We're above that. We should have china and fine silver and all of those things. But I did get up Mr. Chairman just to go back in the back to see at 5 o'clock what we will be eating with today. And we would have to ban all of what we have back there largely from, so we'll be getting some fine china, and somebody's going to be busting sauce and washing dishes. Nick, might be your turn. So we won't have to throw away stuff. So I'm not going to support the motion. I can't see what the straw, there's no medical reason here. The background information tells us nothing that the itty-bitty straw has done. And we look at all the trash liners, like the one in the trash can beneath our knees right now, in every one of our offices. I think if we ban the trash liners, then we'll be in a, you know, they take up a lot more plastic than straws. So I don't want to pick on the little straw. It's itty-bitty. I like to chew on it, and I like its availability. So I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Please be careful with your dental work. Commissioner Dozier.
Can't make a joke right before I come on the mic, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I, I'm supportive of the motion as, which is good, since I seconded, yes. But I wanted to pick up on a few things that have been said. Commissioner Proctor, I actually think you just made the point that others have been making, that, and Commissioner Minor, you may have said this, banning straws is not going to solve the entirety of our single-use plastic problem. And this is a problem. We have a lot of developing nations that have been taking in our recyclables or others, and I think Indonesia may not be moving fast on a lot of things forward, but on this one, reducing single-use plastics, there are some interesting things going on. We talk about disruptive technologies normally when it comes to Uber or, you know, high-tech things or apps. I firmly believe that the biggest disruptive technologies we're going to see are waste reduction and new products that are available to supplant single-use plastics and building materials and other things like that. There are a lot of good reasons for looking towards a ban. Plastic bags or, I mean, as I think, Danielle, you mentioned, we can't ban plastic bags, but looking for ways to reduce our consumption or do a ban. However, I share some concerns about moving too quickly and the impact on small businesses. So just to add two things, whether it's part of the motion or not, Commissioner Lindley, I would just offer this. You mentioned saluting local businesses. We have now led the charge, along with Sustainable Tallahassee, thank you, Mike, for speaking, and Carrie for being here, to form the compact, our first sustainability compact. And I know Maggie, Tessa, you all have started to create more work groups, and I believe a waste reduction work group is part of that. I think this is a fantastic subject to take up as part of the compact, to encourage our major partners in the compact, which includes the hospitals and others, to look for ways and strategies and FSU, FANU, others, to reduce single-use plastic, maybe beginning with straws. And I would even like us to explore a recognition program. If we have local businesses that are eliminating single use, let's have some type of recognition, a sticker on the window that they are good stewards of our local environment. And doing that jointly with the city could be a really great program. So I would like to offer that up as something that our work groups could explore. The other issue for me, and I have talked to small businesses as well that struggle with, they want to give up the styrofoam cups, but the margins are just too thin. So I'm actually going to look at our friends from Sustainable Tallahassee. This is something we discussed in briefing a bit. There may be an opportunity to create a joint purchasing group, maybe through Sustainable Tallahassee, that could help local businesses purchase the more expensive biodegradable straws or other things like that in bulk, so that it defrays some of the cost. Again, I think this is a really good opportunity for our compact to discuss these options, bring us back some recommendations, and I think this particular one, it may be in Sustainable Tallahassee's wheelhouse to kind of lead the effort in looking at that. So those are just two specific ideas. I don't want to stop at just county events, which I think everyone else kind of shares, but looking at a carrot versus a stick at this moment resonates with me.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm 100% for encouraging, saluting, and paying tribute to any of the local businesses who are already ahead of us on this. I appreciate it. And I do think, I know you want to get us to a vote right quick, but I do think it's critical that we're working with the city, since probably most of the restaurants in our community are within the city limits as opposed to in our unincorporated area. So with that, I like the idea, and I would...
Thank you for the vote.
Mr. Chair, one last thought. Thank you, Commissioner Lindley. The pharmaceutical waste and sharps, I did not pull that item off consent. I appreciate the report, and I appreciate the Legal Women Voters focusing on this issue. It is critical. Neurotoxins showing up in our fish and other things are a health hazard as much as an environmental hazard. I would love for the compact, the Waste Reduction Committee, to look at other unique issues like that. If there, if we cannot include collection at our hazardous waste roundup because of the state or federal rules, how could we encourage more and irregular collection sites? Let's explore those opportunities. I didn't want to just leave it with the report, and I know that staff, Ms. County Administrator, you all were continuing to explore those options, but I just wanted to elevate it to the compact as a discussion point. I could envision Thaggart Student Health, or CarePoint, or Bond, or others being collection sites that we may not have explored yet or the staff may be exploring now. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Deluge, and then we'll go to vote.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Deluge spoke about the compact a lot, and I actually, given the fact of some of the things you said, along with the fact that a lot of the businesses that operate, operate inside the city limits, I'm not sure this is even ready for a vote quite yet. I do like where you go with Option 1 and Option 3, but I really think this is something that could quite possibly be talked out during compact conversations. We can get to a better place between understanding where FRLA and other organizations, the business community, along with the environmental community, Women League Voters, all those who are stakeholders in this conversation, where they stand on it, and figure out if we can come to a place that everybody can agree. I actually leaned over to Commissioner Dozier and asked her if this biodegradable plastic straw was, will be legal in what we're talking about here today. She said, "There's a little discussion on, on the horizon of degraded, or how, the time or length it would take for this straw to actually degrade." So there's some discussion there about it. I mean, if, if, if we're going to go down this road, we talked about bringing back just an agenda, looking at the policies, why not go ahead and have the business community, along with the environmental community, as well as Legal Women Voters and others who are interested, sit down and talk about the margins and how we can come together, and something that we can all agree on, whether it's this, the bulk, the bulk situation that you're talking about or other issues. For us to make this decision right now, knowing, knowing that it's going to affect our business community, but it's a good thing for us to, for us to do for our community without having the business community sit down with those interested in seeing us do a full ban. the business community sit down with those interested in seeing us do a full ban, I think this is a bit premature. So it would be my ask that we maybe put together a committee or look at, look at that compact, the compact committee, looking at this, and coming back with recommendations on how to move forward. I also took a lot of interest in your, Commissioner Minor, your, your comments in reference to disability, those who are disabled and others who may actually need a straw. And so I just, you know, as I'm sitting right here, I'm trying to figure out, okay, where do we go, where do we go with this? What would be my decision on it? And to be quite frank with you, I would like to hear more information from, from, from both sides of the coin, sitting together, coming back with recommendations, whether it be, like I said, a committee that we create, or whether it be that the compact committee sitting down to actually talk about this. And I believe that we can do that. Maybe we can come to a place that everybody agrees on the way we move forward versus sitting right here and then have an agenda item come back where we got a, a packed chamber of folks, one on one side and one on the other. So I would like for them to at least have the conversation. That's kind of where I stand right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm fine.
Thank you. Just clarity on the motion first. The motion is to not use single-use plastic straws, styrofoam at county events or on county property, and to do public education, and then just to explore other options.
Yeah, I think?
So it's not?
Yeah, I think I'd have it worded as research options and recommendations for which commercial establishments might be included for exemptions, and then we can add the language of, as well as a committee to be formed.
Well, let's say, the compact has had substantial work, and our staff in Sustainable Tallahassee have led that effort to bring everyone to, we have the committee structure formed. It is there. It includes those partners. Sustainable Tallahassee is the, is our partner organization to reach out to other individuals, I believe, that's, I mean, we're, the point where we're at, to the general public, to bring more voices in. There are ways that we are reaching out more. So I think we have that committee. I'm comfortable with that. The city is a party to the compact, so they will be included, and the motion on the table is just for county operations. So I don't, I just didn't want it to be, we're not moving to pack the chambers on ordinance to ban everything, in my assessment. The last thing, I just want to clarify this. When Commissioner Maddox asked about the straw, biodegradable straws would absolutely, my understanding, be allowable if we did move to ban single-use plastics. But there is some discussion that I've heard about how quickly biodegradable straws actually biodegrade. They absolutely biodegrade faster than plastics. But there are, that's why I mentioned disruptive technology, because there's a lot of new things coming on, and we may see even better biodegradable straws in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I can support one and three with the changes that you guys talked about, and I like the discussion about trying to point out businesses that are making a difference in the community. That was nice you'd bring in the straws that you did from Blaze today. And I think to the degree that we can show, hey, we, this is what we're doing. We model behavior. I like your analogy there, Mr. Chairman. It makes a lot of sense to somebody like me who thinks at a third-grade level sometimes. But it's, it's, I mean, I think it's moving in the right direction. I draw a line in the sand when we start mandating what businesses can and can't do to a degree. I understand that the, the state basically punted and said, we're not going to get in the middle of this. You guys can deal with it. But I think if you look down a list of people that did this, not a lot of counties, there's a few, but you, I mean, it's not overwhelming, and I don't think the data's all there just yet. I'm fine saying this is what we do, and it makes us a better place. I'm going to draw the line for me at saying, I'm going to force this on the businesses here in our community. So as the motion stands, I'm fine with that. I think that's appropriate. The only thing I might add would be, and it was Commissioner Dozier's comments, is let's do a little bit more in the area promotion to outline some of the businesses in our community that are making a difference and showing that they're stepping up.
Mr. Administrator.
And Commissioner Minor, maybe, we're reading each other's minds over here, but I just want to be clear on the direction, one and three, very clear, and four, new four, as per Commissioner Minor, aren't, my understanding was, and I wanted to be sure about this because it, it's a little bit different from what Commissioner Dozier just said, is that would be for us to bring back options and analysis on what a county-wide ban would look like relative to the ordinance, not just it, just, not just county properties and that sort of thing. So I wanted just to make sure, and we're very happy to take this in whatever the direction the board approves, but I did want to just provide that clarification, because that was our understanding, that four did include an evaluation of county-wide ordinance bans, options, what those could look like, and that sort of thing, and the analysis to bring back.
Commissioner Minor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. That, that is what I'm asking for. And, and part of that, as I said before, is, is county staff working with the Capital Area Sustainability Compact, you know, and, and F R L A, and, and coming up with, with what kind of approach would we take? I just, I hate to, I hate to limit ourselves. I think this is important enough. And Commissioner Proctor, I heard what you said about, this is just a plastic straw. What, what, you know, what's the impact here? But with the magnitude of what we're talking about with plastic waste, I think we've got to take a step forward, and to not do so is to basically, you know, admit defeat. So, and as I said before, the health aspects of this are, are pretty extensive. So I, I think it's important. We've already discussed about it at length about this, so I support the motion as it's stated. We'll support it.
Motion being one, two and four, or four being? Adjusting, adjusting four.
Wide possibilities, coordinates, programs, not, not narrowing it to a ban by any means, just, you know?
Incorporating?
Seeing what else we can do in cooperation with the broader community.
Incorporating feedback from the Capital Area Sustainability Compact, F R L A, et cetera.
Mr. Chair?
We got it.
I will support the motion. Before you, I, I think I got a little bit hung up on what Commissioner Minor was saying. I thought we were, we were talking about a full ban, but given the conversation that we're having and the direction that it's going, I can't support the motion on the floor. I will say, though, if we do start to move in that direction, I do, I do want that committee to be put together, but from where we are right now, I can support the motion on the floor.
And Commissioner Lindley, do you accept his amendment to that?
I accept all of it. I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, how many days in jail do you get if you, you know, have a five-cent straw? I'm not, there's no clear ordinance that I'm aware of.
We've not contemplated any penalty phase or sanction.
I'm not clear on it. I don't know that. I don't know what the other counties have as?
On a county, if you're on county property and you do that, do you get days in jail? Do you get lashes in the hand?
Personally, Commissioner Proctor, I don't drink from a straw, so I can't, I can't.
But for those who are going to continue to do so, what will they get?
I'm not the one to establish that.
Okay, we don't have anything like that contemplated. We're passing a suggestion of a policy, and there is no sanction at all.
I think we're ready to vote. All right. But the language of ban not being a part of?
So what is it doing?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by the same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. And I promised that we would continue to move quickly. However, I do know we have a guest. I'd like to push through number 21, and then we'll break.
Mr. Chairman, I move option one.
Move option one by Commissioner Proctor. Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Lindley. Is there any discussion? Seeing no commissioners in queue to speak? I'm sorry, I had to draw the board. There we go. Commissioner Dozier. Miss?
Okay. I thought there was others, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
Actually, Mr. Chair, number 21 is pretty special. What I would ask, Mr. Chair, is can we postpone on 21 and take up 22, 20, 20, 20, I'm sorry, 23 and 24, the bids?
If that were the case, then I would want to break, and then we'll return at 21.
Okay. Where are you, where are you, where are you standing?
Okay, yeah, let's, we'll adjourn. We'll meet at 6:00 here.
We do have a motion on the floor, though.
We have a motion on the table.
All right, you do, we have a motion.
There is a motion. I just didn't want to rush through 21 because it was?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I rescind that motion.
In the interest of, uh?
Thank you.
Want to get to this?
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Motion has been rescinded, so we will resume with item 21 after our break, as well as the public hearings scheduled for 6:00. Thank you. We adjourn.